That too delivers the PD meeting today.
Ready?
Yeah.
And nobody wants them.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna open this Seabrook School Board meeting at four thirty one, if you all wanna stand for the pledge and Tim can lead us on if he doesn't mind.
Not at all.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then we're gonna go right on to public comments. Anybody want to speak? Alright, we'll open it and then we'll close it in thirty minutes if that's good with everybody.
That sounds good.
Okay, and we are going to move right on to the Seabrook Budget Committee, because that we'll just kinda all share later.
Yeah, so yeah, so right now, um, I don't think, I I think I'm gonna take the twelve twelve meeting.
Okay.
Should we share until we can get our fifth member in?
Yep. Yep, we'll share it for now and we'll have, everybody will be reporting too. Yep, and then the part time computer position, yay!
What's that looking like?
So, um, we wanted to bring, um, so we've we've gone through the, um, kinda the posting and, um, interview stage, and there is a candidate that, um, is a current, um, can or current employee at a different district, um, who we were looking to, um, kinda share that resource, so we just wanted to bring that forth to you prior to offering the role to the person, cause it would be, um, we'd essentially be contracting out those services, it would save a number of hours, um, it would be about twenty five hundred, just just under, just over two thousand dollars more than, um, if we, um, if we hired a part-time employee, because that this would make the person, um, a full-time, um, employee with with full benefits. Um, but, um, we just wanted to get your okay prior to, um, going forward with that plan.
Oh, we not have had any applicants besides this or not at all?
We we've had a couple candidates, but th- this particular one is, um, and Dan can probably speak to the, I I I I don't wanna get too in-depth.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think it's fair to say this is the most qualified applicant you had.
Hmm.
Right.
Right?
Um, good. So. So hi- highly recommended by Southampton principal, so.
Thank you.
And you're good, Dan?
What's up?
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Alright, so this would, uh, the two thousand increase would cover the cost of benefits and everything, does it technically become a full-time position between the two schools?
Right, so we, um, yeah, so I it'd be a Southampton employee and Seabrook would be contracting
Oh, okay.
the kinda with Southampton, um, so technically it would be, you know, Southampton's
So it'd be like a third party.
cost, but we'd be contracting out, like we'd contract like a for special education, sometimes we have contracted services with special education firms.
Yeah.
Um, we just can't, we can't have it be two, like we can't split the employee, cause technically it's two two different employers,
Right.
you know, employer identification numbers, you can't split benefits across two different districts, so you'd be incurring half the cost, but it would be a Southampton employee.
Okay.
So, and we would put together a, um, a contract, um, that would outline, um, that we would get a certain amount of services and they would be providing those services, so.
So they would get benefits?
They would get benefits, cause
They they would?
Yeah, um, because even though it's two separate districts, we did get, uh, you know, we did get an opinion from the Department of Labor that even because the person would be under the SAU as a whole, that once they hit that threshold of hours, they really should get the full benefits. So currently it's a part-time employee at Southampton, and we're essentially making that the
Yeah. We take twenty hours, yeah. Okay. And that leaves us open to any year or two if we decide that we want, so we can reapply.
You can make the decision from year to year, um, so that being
Okay.
Yeah, we'll make the contract that way.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
And we want to give Southampton that ability to make the change as well, cause it
And they're familiar with all of our programs, because I'm sure they use them as well, so it'd be easier?
Very, very similar, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Alright, I'll make a, um, do you need a motion for that?
Yep, motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, accept that.
Second, give it a second.
Hold on a second.
Okay, um, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good.
Well, it's good, we can get Glenn some help.
Yes, much needed, thank you Dan for hanging in.
Mm-hmm.
Been a lot. Alright. Now we're gonna move on to the budget, um, how does the board want to proceed budget overview, so he pretty much gave us the whole enchilada, we got it done that night.
Yeah.
We got it.
Um, does anybody have any questions or areas that they would like to kinda discuss?
Oh, definitely, so I want to go over, um, basically the first thing that we talked about with, you know, um, removing a teacher and kinda substituting that allocation towards a behavioral specialist or a B C B A. I wanna go over that, um, again.
So, just to clarify, we're we're proposing adding the behavior interventionist, but the switch would be, um, using an elementary teacher and and using that position as a, um, math interventionist at the middle school level.
Middle. Oh, okay.
So one is a change and the other is an addition.
So very similar, but If you look at, if you go into worksheets
Yes.
on page three, um, it shows, it shows the, um, anticipated enrollment with class size and the number of teachers that we're proposing, um, as well as the addition of the behavior interventionist.
Okay, so that's two totally different things.
Yes.
Um.
The behavior intervention person, would that be full-time?
Yes.
Okay, is this, is this the same one that, um, that public voted on last year and said no, or is it a different, completely different position?
So that's that's different, the warrant article last year was the social worker position, so we're not proposing a social worker.
When it was on the warrant article?
That was a social worker.
Okay. Okay. Cause I know they said no and I don't wanna, I'd rather have, and and this is a new position, the intervention position. So I just, this is my opinion, I think everybody's pretty much tightened the belts and I think we've done a pretty good job here with everything. And, um, I just, the only thing that I would say about the intervention position is that I think we need to add another full-time position. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that, not this year, but that's me, unless, or if we could say we're actually gonna use that position to, um, house, cause we don't have a zone room in the middle school and I know we've talked about this quite a bit. Um, we have it in the elementary and they get quite a, quite a few referrals, I mean, you use that, use that a lot, right, Tim?
It's used really in a proactive way and it's, it is used a lot, yeah, it's certainly helped our students and, um, I could see a benefit for a model like that in any public school.
Yeah. And we don't have it, we lost ours back a few years ago, but it was called the planning room, so there is there is no outlet, like, you know, Tim has that up there and I've heard only good things about the intervention piece of it, so I would probably consider that, but right now I just feel kinda tough putting a full-time position in, and as far as the teacher goes, I don't wanna, um, I don't wanna take any teachers away for right now for anything, so I know you're gonna redo or whatever, but the teachers wrote us a letter, they're concerned, and I and I hear them, and I think they know best, they're in the classroom.
So, so, to clarify, wasn't taking a teacher, it was removing a teacher from first grade to add to the math intervention at the middle school, so that you would move towards having more appropriate levels of intervention at the middle school based on the needs that we see there by reducing one, for the, using the one position at the elementary school, which would still keep you within within the class size ranges the board has agreed to.
Um, so a question on that, we spoke about it before, sorry Maria, uh, sorry, my brain just goes, um,
No, 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 it's alright. Let's just keep going.
So, we spoke about how this three teacher grade would kinda move with this group with this cluster of students, because it's smaller. So, would we be able to manipulate that again once this group got into middle school? And if the numbers didn't continue to to drop behind this group?
Yeah, I mean, I think the assignments for intervention should be based every year on what the data shows your needs are, right?
Mm-hmm.
So those those intervention positions should flow to where the greatest needs are. Right now, you have a high concentration of needs at the middle school, um, and we wanna be able to utilize that support where where we see it's most needed, it's, uh, if we're, again, if we could add an additional position, we would take that, right?
Oh, right, a hundred percent.
Uh, because we can certainly put people to use trying to fill some of the need, but we're trying to think about how we balance the needs right across K eight, and we feel like there's a greater need, um, to shift an additional intervention position to the middle school.
Okay. And that is safe to do with the unions?
Yes, we are allowed to reassign, that's part of the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. Okay, cause we went through this prior and it wasn't fun.
Reassignment?
Um, yes, when we had to reassign
Preschool.
Pres- preschool from because of everything, is this going to be?
Pre- pre-
Yeah, people have a right to appeal that.
Okay. Alright.
But the but the district retains the ability to staff where it feels those needs are most appropriate, um, and and that's typically a collaborative process and yeah, I I I feel like that that's how it should work, we should be looking at what the needs of your students are and making decisions in their best interest, and that changes year to year.
Right, no, I'm just trying to look at the whole picture and trying to see, you know, past my nose a little bit, just to make sure that, you know, once we make decisions like this, that it's not gonna,
Sure.
something's not gonna pop up that, okay, um, and as far as the behavior interventional interventionist, um, you don't wanna add, what if we put it as a warrant article?
Yeah, that I would absolutely, that that would be a
And we support the warrant article. As a whole.
That would absolutely, um, be better, we think we should go in instead of add, putting it in the budget, cause I don't wanna see the budget go down again. We wanna try to pass it, you know, so I think it's a better idea to do it the way you say, not to add the position in the budget, but as a warrant article. I'd agree.
But then if it doesn't pass?
It doesn't pass, we lose it.
Yeah, either way we lose that or if the budget don't pass, right?
Well, if the budget, if we go back to default, then we have to make cuts, and that would be the first thing I would cut, just because it's brand new and it doesn't have a a name to it yet.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's kinda, um, I don't know.
Can I ask, go back to your classroom thing to, um, the clarification for the reassignment things? I just, um, we're gonna have a presentation of the data from the state, um, uh, town, so I just, as a board, hope that we revisit once that data comes in, so we can see the actual areas where we really need strong support, and I think that will help with the shift of whatever it needs to be, but it'll also help the board to be able to support the needs for that too, because we now, we've got a middle school with grades of kids that really, really need help, and, you know, I wish we could hire extra teachers in every classroom, but
Well, I think that's why I think that math interventionist will be great, because we're statistically more math scores in the world, English.
Yeah, that's why that's Yeah. Yeah, I think so, so.
So I would be okay with that, switching that and then revisiting it at a later date and revise revising it with, you know, new data, um.
So leaving that to way of it in the budget and in form of, um, whatever.
No, I was I was thinking about restruct- restructuring the elementary teacher position for the math.
Yeah. That's, sounds like a, that was what was suggested, so it's probably a good idea.
Yeah. So I'm I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Are there, um, any other towns or districts that use the in a behavior interventionalist?
Um, so, we have, uh, behavior support as a paraprofessional in Seabrook Elementary. Um, other schools have full-time, um, B C B A that they share across regular ed and special ed, you have a need for a B C B A full-time in special ed. Um, that is an option that we could consider instead of a behavior interventionist, but we were trying to look at the most economical way to move this position forward and to give ourselves, um, some additional flexibility in the hiring process.
I think, um, just a quick question if I could, cause we're talking about intervention here too, and I brought it up before and the fact of if we lose, and I know that's saying an F, but if we lose that title one, it's over four hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
And the, can you tell me the positions that are covered by that are all the interventionist, right?
There are four, two full-time teacher intervention positions and two, um, tutor intervention positions that we anticipate being in the title one budget next year.
So we would lose them if that, um, goes unless we
I- if it did, yeah.
private elsewhere, if it does, but it's not, it's
I don't know that it would go in in this upcoming physical year, I I think it's more likely to be reduced over time.
Cause we It's, it'll be, yeah, yeah. Okay.
They typically approve that on the biennium, I mean, it it could be, and we don't know what what's kinda in the cards at the federal level, but I think,
Yeah.
um, I mean, you think about your community, you think about that across the country, I think that would be a a tough impact.
Yeah.
You know, to learn about in January, February, March, once Congress gets rolling, um, for districts to be able to absorb that the following year, so I think if that were to happen, it would likely be delayed a year.
Okay, cause we need them, I I don't wanna lose them, that's for sure. Alright, so Lacy, you wanna go, any anything else or anybody? You guys come on up. Kelly, I need to know that for sure, we're getting everything glass is on, Mark and Elba.
That's alright.
Well, we came from ninety-six from Lane Seabrook, um, I just wanna mention that we, you guys had a B C A B A, um, B C B A in budget last year. Um, I know that's different than an interventionist, um, but I mean, it is actually higher up than an interventionist, I mean, behavioral interventionist, um, and during the default budget, we were looking into cutting the curriculum coordinator, and the recommendation was that the B C B A position could be cut in half because the need for the B C B A full-time position wasn't needed, they had the one that they did have, they have her floating, so the other half of the, one part of the position was cut for the default budget, and then the other part of the position, I can't remember if that was part of the N E C C program or if that actually still remained in the budget. But I do know that there's a lot of um, EA positions that haven't been filled, too, that if you can, that you guys can think about for funding.
That's true, too.
But I do, I I did just go to a town, I was at the town budget committee meeting, and they did, the the selectmen tried to keep the budget down, they asked, um, they're trying to put any new positions into warrant articles to give the taxpayers a chance to decide whether or not they want that, those positions, and, um, what's the other thing I wanted to say? Is that I think it, you know, there has been a focus on behaviors, but I think that if if there's gonna be a position like that added on a warrant article, maybe utilize it for a resource room, because if there's less EA's in the classroom, then maybe you can get more support and try to get students into a place where they can get support, maybe closer to less students, and then maybe they can let the way back into the classroom. For some fun.
Great idea.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, it's not too late to come back up here. You're brave coming in.
I can do more from here.
I know, well, thank you, I mean, um, so anything else? What to do with that position, you wanna put on a warrant article?
So if we put that position on a warrant article, what do we do with that seventy-five thousand? It's in the budget, that we would utilize towards that position? Because a warrant article basically is is separate from the budget. So we lose it, we lose it later.
You, so you, we would re- we would remove that from the budget, so it's actually
Reduce your budget, you reduce the budget.
Okay. So we wanna try to fill it just for the sake of filling it?
Well, that would, that'd be up to you, I mean, it's not, it's a new position, so it's not
Right, no, I, but I'm saying utilize, you know, that dollar amount towards something, that's
Yeah. And that's, that's completely out of discretion of the board, um, I'll also note though, it's not just seventy-five thousand dollars, it's also retirement, health insurance, that's all, Pika, so it's closer to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Right. Right, it's just
Okay. So we could take that, hold?
So we we would reduce the budget by a hundred and twenty and then do a separate warrant article for a hundred and twenty, that's, that's what I'm hearing, um, is what you think.
So is it in the proposed budget right now?
The the proposed budget includes that full hundred and twenty, so we would
Right.
that, just so you would know, you know, that would bring the proposed budget is currently a five point five seven percent increase, it'd bring it down to four point eight nine percent.
We're at a four point
Well, maybe that would help get the budget passed, so that we're not stuck in a default budget again, and I think if we support this as a whole board and advocate for this behavioral interventionist.
I would, I would like to, um, support that in a way of, um, bringing something to the middle school like you has at the elementary.
Because it's
There is no way, and this is my opinion, that we could sit here and say, um, elementary needs it, because we know we have tons of behavioral issues at our principals and assistant principals, classroom teachers are dealing with every day, and we don't have that venue like the elementary end has anymore, and I know it used to work, and I believe the same person that's in your elementary end was doing it in the middle school end at one time. I think, uh, for a little bit.
If we're referring to Remi Lee Kenzie, he was always at elementary, but I think there was a ne- a different EA that might have been supporting the middle school.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and then the current B C B A that we have right now, at the time, had more capacity in her day-to-day to to be able to help all students, but as she's, you know, over the years, her case loads really filled up the special education needs, so that's where we're
Yeah.
asking for this as a, really, I do see it helping out with the general population at the middle school, um, ultimately helping all kids, but I think
Right.
it is a piece that's missing, um, and again, I think it could be beneficial for any public school this day and age, should be able to provide a place for kids to go in a proactive manner, um, so that they're able to learn and other kids are able to learn, and I've seen it work, so.
Yeah, and we've been asking for it, we've been asking for it consistently, some sort of, you know, behavior, help with ch- children behavior, we've been asking for this the entire time, so.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't know if you wanna keep this, that position on a warrant article, because we do have four, um, budgeted or more EA positions that we haven't filled, could we then say one of those could be for the zone room?
Surely haven't been filled for a reason, right?
We haven't been able to find applicants, it's not, yeah, we still have continued need, and the budget is built around what's projected for need for next year, so I think we have fifteen,
It's not supplied.
uh, one-to-one supports built into the budget for next year, and the remaining nine positions are shared special education support, and then you have your general ed EA's that you wanted to maintain in K one, uh, most of what we're using right now is to fill those special ed requirements, because that's our primary obligation under the law,
Right.
um, which means that those general ed K one classrooms wind up without that shared support, um,
So is that
Some of the time, not all of the time.
Is that, I know what, I know we've had trouble filling, they've been on here forever, but is the problem with filling them? Because this is what's out there, is the problem with filling them is that you, when you apply, it's for the peak, uh, neck program?
Yeah, you asked us that at the last meeting, that is not the problem, the problem is we have vacant positions, we've had vacant positions in the neck program and we've had general vacant positions.
Yeah. So that is So it's nothing to do with student
No, and it's not unique to Seabrook, um, this is a problem that my colleagues are facing around the state and frankly around the country, it's very common.
Well, the workload for local rate for money is just, you know.
Exactly.
We we are hoping that it'll improve, because we do, this is the first year of the new C P A, so
Hmm.
we did have a bump this year, but there'll be another two dollar, two dollars an hour increase, um, next year, um, and then we'll, then we'll be at a dollar in a year or an hour, can't speak, for the next two years, and we're adding
For the next, yeah.
another factor is is health insurance, cause right now they're only offered a single person, they'll be offered a two-person and then a family plan, and I think with those improvements, we'll, it'll be far more, um, we'll be more competitive and we'll be able to attract more EA's, but we're not quite there yet, we're we're hoping that, um, each year we'll get a, it'll improve a little bit.
Alright, so I I say we reduce the budget. Now, okay, if we reduce the budget, let me go in.
This position wouldn't affect your default, because it's a new position.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad you could just read my mind while I stopped talking.
It would just close the gap between, yeah, it would just close the gap between the proposed budget and the default budget.
Yeah. Right. So any new positions don't go into the defaults, so it, that, to to merit this point, that helps as far as
Oh, okay. Okay. I just don't wanna, you know, put us in a place.
The gap, um, it's still, I mean, it's still about three hundred thousand dollar differential, um, with this fr- with this position removed, but, um,
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
but yeah, that would, that would not be
Well, the same as last year, so if it did go default, we would, we'd be in, you know, either way would be okay, cause we had to find that three hundred thousand this year.
Yeah, I mean, that that would
I know four point eight nine says that, which, but
That'd be very, that would, uh, not be ideal, um, if we went to the defaults, um,
No, it was not fun, was not.
Because we, you know.
Wasn't fun.
It's, you know, we were fortunate that we had some some savings that we were able to recognize with adjusting the bus routes, but that's not gonna be available next time around.
I'm torn whether to have it in a warrant article, cause we keep saying that that's the focus, or that age group is the focus of what we need to do to give extra help to these kids, um, and it seems like it's a real need, but I can see both avenues.
Right, no, I get it, and my thing is, it's like one, we need to have the the budget passed, so it's like if people see that it's a four percent, four point five versus a five point eight, they might be more likely to vote for it, and then if they and then if the behavior is separate, cause they, even the public, it's like, you know, they talk a lot about behaviors as well, so maybe it can be like, hey, if you you know, this, we're trying to do something about it, you know, there's a warrant article, it's gonna cost, you know, whatever cents per dollar of the tax rate, so that they can see
Yeah. Hmm.
but the impact is more than just money. I don't know, I I personally think that we should take that out, reduce the budget, so that we can have a budget pass, put the behavior interventionalist on a warrant article, support the warrant article as a, an entire board, so that it has more likelihood of passing.
That sounds like a motion.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make the best decision to get the, these budgets passed.
Yeah. But this this one's already in the budget, correct?
In the proposed.
In the proposed, so it's not
In the proposed, in the proposed, so it wouldn't, if
It's just kinda pulling it out, but then putting another warrant article, it's just like, I don't know, I get what you're saying.
Well, because we're gonna make it look better, but it's still two things that they need to vote on now. And they need to vote on this budget and then another additional warrant article.
I was just
Know what I mean? Yeah. No, but I'm just thinking if they saw the four point, whatever prices
Yeah, I I definitely, I definitely.
Cause that's, that's, mm, you know.
Yeah. Well, we've heard from a lot of residents and teachers, so, if we do put it in a warrant, warrant article and support it,
Yeah, if they do want
we leave it up to our residents to hopefully vote it in, parents and residents and
Yeah.
It's hard, cause it's such hard times right now.
Cause that's one of the It is, and but honestly, one of the most complaints I've received from other parents is behaviors, is, you know, there was a fighting class, or, you know, those are the complaints that I get, you know, um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then they, yeah.
To just someone that can
And then the kids get sent back, you know what I mean, or get sent home, and if we had that position into place, we could have that room into place that,
Their kids
I mean, we got a principal that's been here, I don't, is it three years now total?
Yep.
That's saying, he's seen this work in the elementary end, the zone has been, and he would think that it would be a great help, and I think we could sell that, I really do, because I don't know anybody out there that is not saying we need less interruptions in in the day, behavior-wise, and that's been going on for a while, so. If anybody has a motion on it, we can put it to rest and move on. Your motion?
Do the principals have any feelings on it?
I have a lot of feelings on it. I I would specifically, if it's designed to be an in-school suspension room where kids who can't regulate, then that would be the wrong way to go with kids, I don't know what, you know, Tim looks like. I don't know what, you know, Tim looks like that's like a Band-Aid. It's not gonna fix the issue.
Yeah, right. I agree.
Um if it was a person who, you know, previous to me arriving, I know the BCBA isn't work with one of the EAs and classroom teachers and talking to kids who are, you know, just having a really hard time in class and creating plans and collecting data, then that's an effective use of a person who has those talents. You know, to piggyback what Tim said, our president BCBA could never do that. She's already overloaded.
Right.
She's doing her special it.
Um and she has to dress because legally she has to do that.
Right.
If you design it in a way that you put solid support system for kids so that they can't access the curriculum or they don't interrupt teachers. Because I'll tell you, I do want to say that um we do not have fights in classrooms. Most of our fights or issues happen when they come in for recess and somebody wants, I I want to be real clear about that. I will give you the data every month. Do we have issues in classroom? A hundred percent. Do kids disrupt instruction? One hundred percent. And I can tell you that Josh and I will address it when it happens. Um so I don't want the misperception to be like, you know, kids are fighting up and down the hallway. I invite anybody to come in anytime to address that.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that's just a complaint.
No, but I but I it's just, you know, standards are made by and we hear things and I'm like, well, anybody can come in and I can give you the data every month.
Right.
Um do things happen every day? Yes, they do. Do we investigate every day? Yes, today we talked to seven boys. So I won't tell you that that doesn't happen. We we want to put solid things in place for teachers so they can teach. No one will disagree with that. But how you design it or what it looks like is really important so that it doesn't be, and I've seen this in a pa- in my past career, like just send that kid to that room.
Yeah.
That's gonna fix that's not gonna fix the issue.
Hmm.
Hmm.
No.
It gets the kid out of class and quite honestly, some kids want that. I guess so.
I was gonna say they probably love it.
I want to that room, so if it was from, and I did speak to the BCBA last year, I said, what did that room look like? Because I keep hearing about their room. She she was real clear in how it's designed and what she knew about it and others other people in the school who helped help support that. I was like, well, that's a different conversation than what I perceived it to be.
Oh, okay.
Or what I envisioned that that we need here at Seabrook.
But it would be up to you all, it would be up to you guys to decide, you know what I mean, what that comes down to.
Does that answer question? Yeah. Yeah, because it's essentially a support zones in the access room.
Well, I think we have, I think we.
Yeah.
I think we have two staffs that we've talked to that have an expertise that really know what it what it could and should look like. Um and your goal is to change how kids interact with their peers and how they interact with the adult who's just trying to teach them all day long. That's what the goal is, of a person that has that specialization. Um so that they are s- they they are successful, that they can access curriculum, because it's it's not easy being in a middle school. You all know.
Well, I don't know.
It's hard because it's hard to navigate peers and four different teachers and really hard content area and you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, this position would be great because it's more of a proactive position versus a reactive position where it's trying to.
And I will say that I think that Tim and I with, you know, the meetings that we had with the um district really wanted to present a budget that does not, you know, worth the taxpayers. It's a lot of money when you have to look into taxes. So I think due diligence, we were thoughtful in what what would we like, you know, it's kind of what I say to my oldest daughter, do you really need that or do you really want that? I really need that. You don't really need that. You want that, you know, so we have wants and needs.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, this is something that we would want, but we also recognize if it needs to come off the table, then it needs to come off the table this year. So taxpayers can have a manageable increase being in a default budget.
I think you'll get a lot of support for it, honestly, in that when you look at it in that um way, I really do. I don't I don't think there's anybody that I don't run into that has, you know, mentioned, what are we gonna do? You know what I mean? What are we gonna do to um help support? And that was, you know, it's been going on for years. And I think this is our chance to really um focus and and the writing of it and how it works would be the professionals doing that. I mean, that's something you guys sit down and figure out and we're just here to um support because I think it will help, I think it will help the administration too. And I know your days have got to be crazy with.
They're no more.
No, but if you could free up some of that time and have that time to be able to focus on other, you know, there's other things that have to be done, you know? And and when do you get the time? I don't know, because it's got to be all day every day. So it might be helpful, right? All day, every day and then after. We'll have that, so I'm hoping.
Alright, so I.
And if we all feel this will help with academics, we're looking at all avenues to try to boost academic proficiency in this as well. So.
Yeah, you don't want a babysitter.
Right.
Yeah.
No.
So.
It doesn't work.
No.
And I think if we stand behind it and promote it.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
I mean, just like the uh contract that passed last year for the teachers, I mean, that didn't pass for a few years for them, so.
Right. Yeah. So I would make a motion. Um is there any, before I do that, is there any other um things in the budget that anybody wanted to? Um yeah, we can close public comment.
What are we close?
Yeah, a quick question. Did you guys go over revenue share now?
We did our last meeting.
What?
Our last meeting?
At all.
Huh?
At all.
Yeah, we did. Did we go over the revenues at our last meeting?
Yeah, and and we can, I mean, there.
I just have a question about revenues. Is it okay?
Yeah, well, because we didn't close it yet. We're almost there.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead. You just say your name and where you live.
How are you here at Seabrook? I have some timeline. So I noticed on the revenues, um it says actual revenue twenty-three, twenty-four for Medicaid, it says fifty-eight thousand. I know we're twenty-three, twenty-four, but the reason I'm asking for a reason. Um it's says one fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, huh? Fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. But then I have a spreadsheet that shows how many parents gave permission to bill Medicaid. And it says for twenty-three, twenty-four that the reimbursement was twenty-four thou- seventy-four thousand, forty-nine dollars. So the number, the number given to the budget was for Medicaid in twenty-three, twenty-four was fifty-eight, one fifty-two. Yet I have a number that you guys provided for billed Medicaid for that same year of seventy-four thousand, forty-nine cents.
So that might be the difference between billed and reimbursed, um because we bill for all like a certain number. So it's and that's much higher than what they actually reimburse us for.
Hmm.
So I'm not without seeing the the spreadsheet that really the where whatever we provide you um initially, um but my guess would be that that was what we billed, um and then we received a percentage of that.
Uh twenty-three to twenty-four school year gives all the grades and how many parents agreed to bill, which was the majority of them was yes, there's a few who are coming those.
That's on the it's on the Medicaid list by grade um.
And then it says that you guys billed on a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, eight hundred and seven, and you were reimbursed seventy-four thousand, forty-nine cents.
Yeah. Okay, I see that. Um so I'll I'll have to I'll have to check on what the changes, because I there appears to be uh
Thank you.
An error with one of those numbers.
And while while she just spoke about just really quick, um does anybody else have anything to say because we're getting ready to close that comment?
I'm just trying to look up for the revenues to be able to put the.
Um Matt, did we, well, she's looking, did we get a follow-up on the um billing private insurances? Whether or not we can or cannot do that? Um and then the other question is, um why would a parent refuse if they have insurance that will help reimburse the school to help the um taxpayers? What would be the reason that they would refuse to let us bill? Is there a reason?
Um for lots, I I I'm not gonna speak for people's individual reasons, but that often happens because people don't want their data or per- they're concerned about personal information being shared with the government and
Yeah, I mean. It's a government insurance, right?
It is, but they don't want necessarily to have the school know that they're receiving that or to have that information be shared elsewhere. Um I've heard from people before um that they're fearful that that will impact their personal insurance, even though those are totally separate funding streams. But yeah, people have their own reasons and and beliefs for that.
So if you if you bill Medicaid um for a service that affects their private insurance on services?
That's the fear that I've heard from people. It's not true, but I've heard that fear expressed by people.
Okay.
Okay, so I see what comes. So.
Yeah, with respect to your question regarding the billing of private insurance, so it is technically feasible under the law.
Yeah.
Though when I checked with the State Department of Education, they're not aware of any districts within New Hampshire that do that. Um in order to do private billing of health insurance, you have to be set up with a health insurance company with provider numbers. Um so in addition to signing up with Medicaid, all of our providers would have to sign up with all of the private insurance billing companies, right? Be assigned provider numbers. You'd have to have someone who's tracking that, someone who's submitting and managing all of that billing. Um and a lot of people will refuse to give that care because it can impact um their deductibles and or the number of services available under their private insurance. And so for that reason, um again, according to the State Department of Ed, there are no districts in New Hampshire that are currently billing private insurance for special education.
But but we could if, I mean, say it's
It's not a big home.
I'm just throwing a number out there. If say it ends up being that it's three hundred thousand dollars that we could be recouping by billing. I mean, maybe this year we can really.
I find that unlikely, given the very limited nature of services that you're able to bill for under private insurance. You're talking about medically necessary services. Um and if those families were responsible to make sure that they don't incur any penalty as a result of those services being provided and that impact to their insurance. So if they have a deductible, we'd still have to pay for the cost of those services up to the deductible. We'd still have to make sure if they had a copay, we'd have to pay for the copay. It's very complex when you're dealing with dozens of private insurance carriers. Um and we would need to hire um at least one person, if not more than one person, to track and sort all of that. Um and and again, I don't know um what level of permission we would even get.
Alright, so close public comment, a motion to close slide fourteen.
I'm making motion to close public comment, five fourteen.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, now you want me to go on next?
So to get this budget moving, um
Yeah.
I'm willing to accept the budget as proposed. Um I do want to um I actually do want to change to put that behavior interventionist on a warrant article so that the budget that is being presented to the taxpayers is lesser than um this. It gives the taxpayers the option, um but I'm doing it basically because we anything to pass this default budget. We need to uh n- anything to not be in the default budget, so.
Yeah. Yes.
Um I know it's something that if we did go to de- default, it's the first thing that we could cut. But then we're cutting other things too that we don't want to. I don't wanna, we don't wanna cut teachers, we don't wanna cut interventionists that we have already.
Okay, so.
So.
I'm waiting for Michelle. She said coffees go.
Wait for Michelle. Oh, okay.
Coffee.
Okay. So I was gonna.
Do you ask to give a different number and you can propose the number with that reduction?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, please, yeah.
So um I just I just did the math for that specific position and it's um almost exactly a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and I I suggest making it a round number um for when you do bring it forth as a warrant article. So um the warrant article would be a hundred and fifteen and the um budget would be eighteen million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine.
Isn't that the current number?
Five eighty-nine.
That is the current number.
Eighteen, six, thirty-four, five eighty-nine, I think.
Six, thirty-four, five.
I took it off the eighteen, six, eighteen million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine.
Okay. So yeah.
So I will, I didn't listen to one number that came out of your mouth.
I did, I did. If you'll give me one second, Lacy, Lacy, can you give me just one minute and I'll copy it into the and I'll read it for you.
Oh, it's been a long day.
So I think the pro- what the motion is to reduce the proposed operating budget by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
To eighteen million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion?
That's my motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um all in favor, do we have a discussion? Anybody want to have anything else to add? Okay, we are none. Well, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the warrant article have to be added for that.
Then we'll, um do you need a you need a separate motion?
So so yeah, we'd be looking for a separate separate motion for the um behavior interventionist warrant article, but also the other proposed warrant articles.
Okay. Um the on the warrant articles, do we, um so whoa, let me pop up really quick in the wrong area. The warrant articles, we went over those. I, okay, the withdrawal committee recommendation, that article, who drafts that article up? For the woman, is that us?
So we'll we'll get the language from the Department of Revenue um for for that warrant article.
Because that one right there is so important that it that, you know, I don't know how you could say it or think of it not to confuse the voters. I I think it's important and it and I would like the board to have a little bit of, maybe at our next meeting to review that, to make sure that it's understandable. Because sometimes you can get an article and it comes in and you think, oh, if I vote yes, it's yes, but you really vote no. So as less is confusing as can be on that one, um straight to the point.
I have a feeling it's gonna be kind of confusing.
You know?
Unfortunately, I unfortunately they have, it's pretty much a template that the Department of Revenue provides. So we'll, so I will get that for you for our next meeting.
Okay.
Um and if I can certainly go back to the Department of Revenue with any suggested edits. Um but I I know from our previous experiences, very little leeway with adjusting um the warrant article language.
You know, when we did the withdrawal committee, we we spoke and I believe all seven members agreed that we would put a note on there saying that four members did not want to withdraw and that three did.
Yeah, right.
So we can put, use that as a note to maybe help.
So I can, knowing that, I can make that request now before, when I, because I'm gonna have, I need to go to them to get the language.
Four, yes, to withdraw.
Yeah.
That's right.
I appreciate that.
So I'm sorry, so was, what was the breakdown? Four, three?
It was four, three.
We asked three.
It was, it was four, three, yeah, four to not withdraw and then three wanted to withdraw.
Okay. Alright, I will um I will ask them if we can add some type of note to those.
See, I wrote that backwards, just taking a note and when you said it, corrected it.
No.
So yes, the opposite. So, okay, and then all the other ones? The unnecessary fifty thousand, the special education expendable trust was up to, is it up to three eighty-five or did that change?
Um that that is at three forty-five?
Three forty-five?
Yep.
That's a good place too, right? And then what about the building? The building's a little low though, right? Because we used a lot out of it.
Yeah, so the building is down to sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-two, so.
Alright. Well, I mean, it's good attention.
Yeah.
You have a hell of a building.
No, they really does.
The other the other warrant article that we had some discussion on was the tractor and truck. You had discussed maybe restructuring it, doing two
Suffer.
or doing one this year, so that's something to consider as well. If you want, we can certainly structure it however you please.
Whatever you guys wanna do, but I think separating, cause maybe somebody will say, yeah, we really do need that tractor, but we don't need the truck and then we vote no. So either separating or waiting and do one of the other, whatever, whatever you want. I just manage together sometimes, that can be a, I know. They're all running to my house, but, it's up to the board, what do you think?
Yeah. No, I mean, this was brought to Peter, right? And Peter was fine with it, facilities manager? Cause he's the one that, you know.
Well, he, he feels strongly that we need both of these vehicles.
Oh, I understand, I see, yeah.
Um, but ultimately, you know best as as far as what's you think will is the best approach to getting funding from the community, whether it makes more sense to have a separate contract. We thought that it was a low enough number that them combined, it might be a better chance.
Yeah.
But if, if you feel that it would be better to split it, then we can, um, I I would defer to you as to what you think the community could support.
I was thinking about splitting it, but we just added another warrant article.
Yeah, I know.
So.
It makes the protocol lower.
Yeah. I know. There's so many.
Yeah, it does.
What about the special education expendable trust? I know sometimes when they get up to a certain threshold, we, um, move, but I know it's a scary thing. But three, three, what did you say, forty-five is a pretty good.
So our current balance is three forty-five and our, what our target is, is um four hundred, so that's what we're shooting at.
Oh, okay.
Um, but obviously we're in better shape with special education than with the building maintenance. If you had to choose between the two.
I mean, I'm just, but I know we've done that before, we've held the building and the special ed if they're up there. But I don't know, I know things can change and.
There are also, I mean, as you know, that we've had significant special education costs this year that we're we're obviously gonna wait until close to the end of the year, but there's a likelihood that we may have to withdraw to fund those expenses this year.
Okay, that's good, come on, thank you. On the, um, just a quick follow-up, cause I know we did the budget, but I just, I feel like we should mention the follow-up on the McKinvento, the amounts of money that we are bringing out of the taxpayers' um budget, which I just learned. I, are we doing something to kinda look at that at least maybe every six months to make sure everybody's in the same position and they still qualify for that? Or how are we doing that? Cause that right there is gotta be, that is a lot of money coming out of the taxpayers. If they don't have a choice, they have to pay it, you know? I don't know if that, how long, how often do you review that?
Yeah, so that's the role of the social worker. Um, so we're we're utilizing our SAU-wide social worker really to to coordinate that as best possible. It's not ideal because we we lost that position.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but between our SAU-wide social worker, um, the principals, our our guidance counselors, we're kind of patching that together.
Okay.
Um, and as, I think, um, and and we're we're also contracting, we'll we'll be contracting out some, some, a small amount of contracted services to fill that, um, to kind of assist with that.
Yeah, cause that's a big cost.
Um, but, but that is, that is what that position would be doing is, um, to, you know, to be working with those those families and determining that they, their their residence and what their qualifications are.
Well, we have a partnership too with, um, Seacoast Youth Services. Is there any way that we could, um, tap into them too to also kinda help us with that? I mean, they may be some cross-reference there?
Well, we we've.
Cause they have a lot of services too.
I mean, there's certainly one of the the vendors that we've talked to about contracting some of these services out,
Oh, okay.
but they would, that would be something that we would have to pay them for.
Okay. Okay. Alright, guess that is it for me? Any other questions?
I was trying to get back to my, I have so many tabs open.
It's a lot of documents, sorry.
It's good, no, it's really good because I'll lean back on those the next time around.
No.
Cause you know, being new, sitting here, it's like you want all the information you can gather.
And also remember that you can go back to last year and see all the same documents from the pre- previous years.
Yeah.
So sometimes it's good to have a frame of reference as to what, what we proposed in the past.
So what are we gonna do with the truck and truck, or leave it together so it's not two different articles? Can we, can we, the the way that this is warranted, can we move? Just because I think the withdrawal committee recommendation is super, super important too, and it's not a, um, can we move that up top or no?
I believe because it's a non-monetary, um, warrant article.
Has to stay at the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And the child benefit services as a citizens petition? So that, um, I'll see, I believe they are second to last, but I might be able to flip those two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that's, that's another question I'll have to check.
No, I like it either first or last, so people will be able to see it.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be a confusing article, no matter what we try to do, um, with the wording and everything, but I definitely want people to not miss it and not just say, you know, vote whatever, to understand the impact of it.
Yeah, we can go over that more too if they're deliberate exception.
Okay.
Go over verbiage and, um, explain it to the taxpayers, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, a little bit, right. Okay, so everything's done?
Yeah, we'll just add that warrant article for the behavior intervention list for a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yep.
To this list. Um. Hopefully the vi- I say we leave the vehicles as they are now and hopefully they pass.
Yeah.
If they don't, the next year, we'll see if they can pick priority.
Yeah.
And we can just try, try for one and.
Yeah. Sounds good.
But we, they both need desperate, they, they're both desperately needed, so.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so.
So I will, um, motion to approve the warrant articles with the addition of the behavior intervention list for one fifteen thousand?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. And alrighty.
Do we have a non公, do we have anything to non-public?
If I can have just five minutes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, just um five minutes in non-public will be great. So I can know, you know, what the boards do want. Cause we don't have Kelly anymore and she was our legal connection. So I just wanna make sure that we're good on that. So, is, are we all finished up? We can go into non-public for five and then we done?
Um, before we do that, can we talk about, um, so we're all done with budget?
Yes.
Can we talk about if we're having our meeting the third or the tenth?
The tenth. Cause that's not.
The tenth is your regular meeting.
Yes.
Just a regular meeting, that's right.
That, that's who we all plan to come to and I don't wanna mess that up.
And the, um, addition of school board member, um, the applications are due by the third.
Yes.
As we said at the last meeting.
Correct. Give us a little time, you know, between.
Yeah. To review.
The time is off.
And I'll just do the same questions, those in there.
And right now, I think we only have.
Yeah, you don't even need to send them to me, I'll just.
Oh, you're gonna ask those same ones? I'll, yeah.
I'll just keep those in to the, um, there's, okay.
Just to make it better, yeah, perfect.
And then we only have two at this time, so anybody out there? We're looking for people to apply and of course, the board can always consider, and I, and I just wanna say this, we got an email, that we don't fill out. So it's up to the board, cause it's so close to election, there's a couple weeks left, so. Okay, so they didn't when Jessica withdrew in Eastonburg? I think we were probably here for the lot.
That's true, we had opinion from the school board association a couple of years ago that you didn't need to fill if it was within a couple months of the vote.
Good to know. Alright, so that's it, um, motion to go into non-public, um, I would say under C.
Alright, so you're making the motion?
Yeah. And we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
And all in favor? I'll roll call, I always do that.
Jen?
Yeah.
Lacy?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Michelle?
I was gonna say no. I was waiting for, I was waiting for a signal. I was waiting for, I was waiting for a signal.